All right, I'd like to welcome you to the, everyone, to the 2024 Lacey Township Board of Education Annual Reorganization Meeting. Have you rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Adequate notice of the reorganization meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 12th, 2023, and by posting the notice in the Forkett River and Lenoka Harbor post offices, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the open public meeting law. All right, we're going to start with the oath of office. I got Mr. Bell and Mrs. Claus come to the table. All right, I'm going to read and you guys say I do at the end. Okay, raise your right hand. I, Kim Claus, Daniel Bell, do solemnly affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I do.
I, Kim Claus, and Daniel Bell, do solemnly affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and that I faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Thank you. Congratulations. Do families like to come down and take pictures? Take a few minutes for pictures?
Don't shy away, it's a nice shot. Everybody get in.
My family's like to come down and take pictures. Take a few minutes for pictures.
Don't shy away, it's a nice shot. Everybody get in.
Okay, and now we're going to do the roll call of the new board. Just stay here. Mrs. Armato?
Here.
Mr. Armato?
Here.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Conity?
Here.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Present.
And Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Now, we're going to take nominations for Board President. A member move to nominate a president?
I'd like to make a nomination, Skip Peters.
I'd like to make a motion to close nominations.
I'd like to nominate Sal Armato.
Okay, motion to close nominations.
Motion.
Second.
All right, we'll take the vote on Skip Peters. Mrs. Armato?
No.
Mr. Armato?
No.
Mr. Bell?
No.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Present.
And Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Now, we're going to take nominations for Board President. A member move to nominate a president?
I'd like to make a nomination, Skip Peters.
I'd like to make a motion to close nominations.
I'd like to nominate Sal Armato.
Okay, motion to close nominations.
Motion.
Second.
All right, we'll take the vote on Skip Peters. Mrs. Armato?
No.
Mr. Armato?
No.
Mr. Bell?
No.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
All right, we have a quorum for Mr. Peters, as Board President. Congratulations.
Thank you. Do you have yours, Lacy?
For now, I'd like to call for nominations for a Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Kim Claus, please.
And I'd like to nominate Cheryl Armato.
I'd like to make a motion to close nominations.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we'll do the roll call for Kim for Vice. Mrs. Armato?
No.
Mr. Armato?
No.
Mr. Bell?
No.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Okay, that's a quorum for Mrs. Claus to be Vice President. Congratulations. Okay, now I'd like to introduce Mr. Padula, our attorney, to do the ethics training.
Thank you. We're here for New Jersey School Ethics Training, which is required by law, which is a question, why are we doing this? It's one of the legal requirements of the School Ethics Act, and that's where school ethics laws come from. They come from the School Ethics Act, which also includes the Code of Conduct for School Board Members. Both are New Jersey state statutes, and we'll discuss the differences between the two. There's slight differences, and there is some overlap between the two. But who decides if there's a violation of the School Ethics Act? First, if there's any questions about it, any Board Member or administration can reach out to the Board President and reach out to me and ask me or my office for advice on whether there's a violation or potential violation, or how, you know, potential conflict of interest issue should be handled. But the ultimate arbiter of it is the School Ethics Commission, and they handle things in two different ways. One, if someone, an individual, files a complaint against any Board Member here or anywhere around the state, the School Ethics Commission will adjudicate that complaint. Sometimes it will be referred to the Office of Administrative Law for a hearing, but ultimately it's the School Ethics Commission, and then that goes up through the Commissioner of Education, and eventually the Appellate Division, and the Supreme Court if it goes that far. But more importantly, the School Ethics Commission also provides advisory opinions. So if we foresee a question coming up, we could write to them, and hopefully they could give us an answer sooner rather than later. Sometimes it takes them a few months, but that is another function they provide, that they'll provide advisory opinions. And what can they do? Besides an advisory opinion, if they're actually adjudicating a complaint, they can censure, reprimand, suspend, or remove a Board of Education member for violations of the law. So where does this body of law of school ethics come from? Like I said, it comes from the Act, the School Ethics Act, the Code of Conduct from School Board Members, advisory opinions, and decisions from adjudicating ethics complaints. So if there are ethical questions and we research it, that's what we look at to research. What are the differences between the Act and the Code of Ethics for School Board Members? The Act itself applies to the Board and to administrators, any administrator in the district. The Code of Ethics applies only to Board of Education members. The Act is intended to encourage and instill respect and confidence of the public in the Board and the public education system in the district, but the intent is to avoid actual conflicts of interest, avoid appearances of impropriety. It does require some other things, like this training, for example, requirement of financial disclosures. And really, what you want to do is avoid any business and personal or familial interests in anything related to the Board of Education. So if there's anything that the Board is voting on, like a contract with a local business that you might have an ownership interest in, obviously that's something that you need to recuse yourself from. Family members who might be employed here, that's something that a Board Member cannot be involved in, or anything that has a direct impact on someone's child that would be different than a general impact on the student body or a class in general. So what you want to look at is, is there a relationship, or the appearance of a relationship between some conduct and the Board Member outside of his or her role as a Board Member? That's kind of your test. Now, the Code of Ethics is a bunch of I-statements. I will do this, I will not do that. For example, I will follow all laws, rules, and regulations, I will not discriminate, I will not administer the schools, I will maintain confidentiality, things of that nature. Board Members are obligated to act in a way that protects students and staff, refer all complaints to the Superintendent. One important thing to remember is you cannot act as a Board, and you're not a Board unless you're sitting here. So no Board Member can make promises outside of this meeting room, or do anything individually that can hurt or negatively impact the Board. Now, the other side of that coin is you're always seen as a Board Member, whether you're out on the soccer field, the football field on a Friday night, in the supermarket. So you want to be cognizant of that when people come up to you and, you know, say, I got this issue, or that issue, or, you know, my son's being bullied, et cetera. When things like that happen, you have to remember always to refer those complaints to the Superintendent. I usually advise Board Members to advise that individual who comes up to you that there's a chain of command, and to follow the chain of command, but you as a Board Member, just to kind of, as a, you know, double insurance, go back to the Superintendent after the fact and say, hey, I ran into so-and-so, and this is what they told me, I just want to give you a heads up, and I advise them to come to you about it. Really, the Superintendent is the chief school administrator, that's her title besides Superintendent. It's actually in the statutes, and what you want to do, kind of a way to encapsulate all this, is think of the district as a ship, and the Board is the owner of the ship and sets the ship's destination, but the Superintendent is the captain of that ship and charts the course to that destination. Where do these ethical issues arise? They usually arise in negotiations, if someone has, negotiations with your various unions, if someone has a family member, business associate, et cetera, in one of the unions in the district, or if you have a family member who's a member of a teachers' union, you know, otherwhere in the state. That could impact that, and I know we've dealt with that before, so we don't need to get too much into that. Social media is where a lot of ethics cases arise, and I've seen a lot of that lately all over the state. There's ethics cases arising out of Board Members' posts on social media. From this point on, when you post on social media, you have to include a disclaimer that you're not speaking on behalf of the Board, or as a Board Member, your opinions are your own, and they're not intended to represent the opinion of the Board or of any other Board Member. Ethics issues arise during hiring and firing staff members. If you have a relative, business partner, or there's any relation whatsoever, talk to me about it ahead of time. It will figure out if it is an actual conflict that you should recuse yourself or abstain from hiring or firing of somebody. Campaign statements, that comes up a little bit. Usually those are made in the context of social media, so I don't want to get too much into that. But really, the bottom line is ask for advice. You know, you know, your relationships better than anyone, so come to me, come to Dr. Pereira, and let's get ahead of something before it becomes an issue. So kind of, now, to summarize and really the takeaway, besides the School Ethics Act, the Code of Conduct for School Board Members, I always say it comes down to four separate Cs: their confidentiality, conflict of interest, chain of command, and communication. As Board Members, you have access to a lot of information, whether it's staff members or a student issue, you're not always given the student name, but you know more details than the general public about things that might occur in the school. That's probably your biggest obligation, is confidentiality, not to discuss anything. And you're going to be asked about it because the public assumes you as Board Members know information, and you do, and, you know, knowledge is perceived as power, but you have to maintain that confidentiality. That's of utmost importance. Conflict of interest, we've mentioned that several times tonight, so just remember to avoid even an appearance of a conflict. Let's talk about it first and get ahead of it, make sure there's not any issues. Chain of command, I mentioned that before, that there's a chain of command, that, you know, something that happens in a classroom doesn't necessarily become a Board issue immediately, it has to go through the chain of command, the teacher, the principal, administrators, and then if it's not resolved, it comes to the Board. And that's not a way to keep the Board out of issues, it's a way to keep you functioning and to stay in your lane. The Board has big-picture issues to deal with, and if something could get resolved at a school level, it doesn't detract the Board from, you know, looking at the big picture of where the district wants to end up. Lastly is communication. Everything I've talked about comes down to communication, whether you're communicating here, or with your administration, Superintendent, School Business Administrator, or with my office, you know, clear, concise communication and open communication is really what keeps everyone out of ethical trouble. And again, we're here as a resource to help each and every one of you and the district, so if you have any questions, just please feel free to ask.
Can we make a motion on that now?
No.
Okay, as Board President, I'm going to make the announcement for appointments for, I'm sorry. My apologies. Stand by. Rookie move. Need a motion for resolutions one through five, please. Motion.
I'll second.
Who was first? Jack? Jack.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Notice the meetings we're doing for that? Or just go right to committees?
That was number five, so it was part of the resolution.
Okay, gotcha.
So now you're on to your question.
Now, I'm going to appoint committee members. First, we have Finance and Operations Committee. For the chairperson, I pick Ms. Kim Claus. On that committee, I have Jack Conity and Mr. Armato. Finance and Operations Committee, Ms. Claus will be chairperson, along with Jack Conity and Mr. Armato, and I will be the alternate for that group. The next committee is Policy Committee. Jack Conity will be chairperson. Along that committee will be Kim Claus and Mr. Dan Bell. I, again, will be the alternate for that committee. The Curriculum Committee. Chairperson, Ms. Linda Walker, Ms. Cheryl Armato, and Mr. Dan Bell. And I, again, will be the alternate for that committee. Child Study Team Negotiations Committee. Chairperson, Cheryl Armato, Kim Claus, and myself will be on that committee, there is no alternative. You good? Referendum Committee. Myself will be the chairperson, Ms. Linda Walker, and Mr. Sal Armato will be on that committee with me. The alternate will be Mr. Jack Conity. New Jersey School Board Association, Board Delegate. Ms. Cheryl Armato and Mr. Armato will be the alternate for that. You guys are going to have to write this down, I have all copies to give you. Ocean County Scoreboard Association. I will be the delegate, Skip Peters. The alternate will be Mrs. Walker. Now, usually the Board Presidents on the Finance Committee, and I'm going to lean on my chairpersons to get back to me on what's happening in those meetings, and if you look, I put myself as the alternative to fill in for those. And the reason I did that was, the referendum, I'm going to be chairperson on the Referendum Committee, that is huge. We have air conditioners and heat VAC systems throughout these buildings that are almost 40 years old. They need to be replaced. We're not going to make it up with a 2% max on the tax game to try and repair those, replace those. So yes, we are going for a referendum to bring this school up to date, safety, security, and air conditioning, heat, and roofs is a big concern. So some of you are probably wondering that are familiar with the school boards, that usually the Board President is on some of the other committees and chairperson on that, but not. My concern right now is making these schools up to date, safer, newer, nicer, and cleaner. Okay? And that is it. Next, we go to meetings? No? I thought public comment was after. Where do you want me to go to? Now, we're going to go into public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand and will call it upon, will state their name, address, or affiliation, and intention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the Board President. Comments will be made on one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes. No audience member shall be recognized twice until all have wished to comment and have been recognized. This portion of the meeting is for public comments only, and there will be no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is to perform our business in public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the Board, there's an established chain of command to follow. Do we have anyone for public comment? Please state your name and your address, please, when you get to the microphone so we can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Donna Neal at 1011 South Branchway in Forkett River. First, I want to wish everyone here today a happy and healthy 2004 New Year. What a great way to start out the year by swearing in our newly-elected Board of Ed member, Daniel Bell. I hope and pray that this year will be a year where the Board and families unite in making a safe environment for our precious children and grandchildren, denouncing the wokeness and indoctrinations the NJEA and the world so wants us to go with. At the last NJEA convention, pictures were shown of the drag queens that attended, along with pedophilia books they are pushing for our schools. I give lots of credits to those brave teachers who have led this ungodly association. Now, I would like to touch base on another extremely important topic that's quite alarming. I'm not sure if you've seen this yet, but you can look it up. The U.S. Newsweek and World Report dated November 14th, 2023, where they evaluated scores of 1,322 elementary schools. Here are the three elementary schools in Lacey Township. Lenoka Harbor came in first at 674 ranking. Cedar Creek School came in 688, and Forkett River School came in 629. I know that there's quite an agenda that you're planning, but I have to say, now is the time to take these statistics seriously. The math scores and the reading scores are not good. The reading scores have come up a little bit, but they are still low. The whole state's low. The main priority is to begin increasing these scores. Our children suffered with the COVID lockdown, which put them behind. Money is an issue, and we understand that, and we know that there's a shortage, and it's hard to do things without money. But I urge you to set aside money and figure out ways where we can increase these scores and help our children get through these tough times. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, we're going to close it for a public comment now.
So we're going to adjourn to go into executive session for personnel matters. When we come out, we will have a walk-on motion to make a resolution on. So it will be max 20 minutes.
And there will be action after.
Yes, there will be action after.
We'll be about 20-minute break, thank you.
Do we have a motion to go into executive?
We're taking a motion right now to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter for no longer than 20 minutes. It may be shorter than 20 minutes, and there will be action by the Board when we come out of executive session.
Do I have a motion to go into executive?
Motion, Peters. Okay, at this time, we're going to go into Superintendent Comments?
No.
No?
No.
Oh, got a walk-on motion.
All right.
I'll get it.
Okay, we're going to do a walk-on. We're going to move that the Board approve the following resignations. ID number 857961, effective 1/5/24, and then ID number 857479, effective 1/5/24. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
So that was Jack and Linda?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Armato. Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to have Board Superintendent Comments, and then Board Comments.
You'll get it. May?
We'll be fine.
All right, so first, I wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year. We have our regular January board meeting coming up on January 16th? 18th?
18th.
Yes, 18th. But I wanted to congratulate our newly-elected Board Members. Mrs. Claus, you're not new, but congratulations. Look forward to our continued collaborations. Congratulations to Mr. Bell. I look forward to our new collaborations moving into 2024 and beyond. And even though he's not here, I just wanted to thank Mr. Polino for his years of service, dedicated service to our students and our families, and I'm sure he is home relaxing right now, looking forward to not having to be here on January 18th. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Mrs. Downing for her leadership as Board President. as board president. It was a crazy year and a crazy start to the school year for many reasons, but thank you, because working with you was fantastic. So, yes. And now, we turn our attention to Mr. Peters to lead this board, and to Mrs. Claus to lead us as vice president. Looking forward to working with both of you and the rest of the board. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, this time, we're going to have board comments, and we'll start with Mr. Bell.
Thank you, sir. Well, I just want to say thank you, number one, to everybody that voted for me. 2,750 votes. I don't even know that many people, but thankful that they voted me in, and thankful for my wife. She prayed hard that I wouldn't run for the Board of Ed. And so, when I decided to, then she began to pray for me, and is obviously here to support me tonight. And there's going to be times I wish she was sitting here, not me. But I do thank the board, and I want to thank, I know Mrs. Seema isn't looking at me, but she is one that spurred me on to run as well, and I want to thank her. And I want to thank the board. I really, honestly, I know that Frank will watch this, because I know he wants to hear what I have to say. And I was really looking forward to working with Mr. Polino. And so, I will miss that part of being part of the board, but I'm looking forward to three years of service here in our community.
Right down the line, Mr. Armato, do you have anything to say?
I'm just, Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome, Dan. Congratulations, Kim and Skip. And I look forward to a collaborative year.
Right down the line, Mr. Armato.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone who came out to vote. I'll do my best to represent the students, the teachers, and of course, the taxpayers with every decision that I make. Also, I'd like to thank the board for nominating me for vice president, and congratulations, Dan. We've spoken many times, and I look forward to working with you, too. Okay. Good luck, Skip, being president.
Mr. Connady?
Happy New Year. Congratulations. Welcome, Dan. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Armato?
Hey, yeah, for me, real quick, about a year and a half ago, a gentleman walked into this room and started speaking Bible verses. And we became, friendship grew out of that. And it's very rare that you sit on a dais like this, and someone that you became friends with runs for it, runs for a board position and wins. So I'm very, very grateful, Dan, that you're on this board. I think you're going to bring a lot of calm influence in trying times, and it's good to have a friend on board. And Kim, congratulations. I wish you nothing but success. Wish you the next three years be the best three years. That's it.
And Mrs. Walker?
I just want to look for, looking forward to working with you, Dan. I'm glad you're on Curriculum with Cheryl and I. It's going to be a great committee, and I think we're going to get a lot done. Mr. Zalinski, get ready for us. And I want to wish Skip a lot of luck in that position. Good luck.
Usually, when you do something like this, it's right at the beginning of the meeting, before we say a pledge. But I'd like to have a quick moment of silence. What happened in Iowa today? I don't know if you're familiar with what happened. We had a tragedy happen there, where we lost two lives and five students were wounded. Alls they did was went to school that day. The teacher got hurt. Alls they did was went to do their job that day. So if we could just have a quick moment of silence, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. As far as my speech, if you witnessed or not, as board president, it can be tough. And I know that I have someone to support me. If you've noticed, I already reached over and whispered underneath here once or twice, the first time, but I'll get it down. That's, that's for me to learn. I'd like to congratulate Kim and Mr. Bell down there. Welcome. And everyone else, we have a job ahead of us. We're losing almost $6 million in the budget. Am I correct? Six. Six million. That's, that's a lot of work to make up for. So I'm going to be politically going out to work constituents and trying to get them to go to the state for us. Do me a favor, public, if you're watching this, don't take it out on us. We didn't cut it. We need to go to the state now and work hard. And, you know, we'll get, you know, 400, 300, 200 people in here sometimes when we're, you know, making cuts and whatnot. People not happy, but it's not us. You need to go to the state now and help us out, support us. It's only seven of us on the board up here working at it, and, you know, Ms. Pereira's working hard, and Sharon's working hard on everything, and it's, it's going to be a tough year. So we're here. I have a passion for students, and I just want to move forward. All right? That's it. And motion to adjourn.
Do we need the resolution?
Did we do it? We did it.
Oh.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion. Have a good evening.
All in favor?
All in favor?